Oh, alright, thank you. Nathan Vaughn, my way on.
Well, I hear you guys, you guys. I have my outfit in the car and I ran, so I was a little longer dressed, but.
You don't let murk or this they come happy to see. Hi, did you win?
No.
It's a building.
We still, we had a good season.
Building you, I have to.
Ah, you.
Okay, I think we should start. Welcome everyone to the October twenty second, two thousand twenty four meeting of the Portsmouth School Board. Um, Patty, can we have a roll call, please? Absolutely. Liz Beer, Fisher Campbell.
Here.
Nancy Flaver.
Yeah.
Good clues.
Here.
Brian French.
Here.
The Hudson.
Here.
Byron Maddow.
Here.
Carrie Nolte.
Here.
Lisa Rafford.
Here.
Nathan Delaney.
Here.
Okay, can we all stand for the bunion pretzels and look at Ryan's lap? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own. Do you have any announcements or recognitions?
Just a couple, a couple of quick ones. Uh, we, uh, folks who looked at the agenda, we just came out of, uh, tour of, uh, Lister Academy. It was first, for the whole board, is first opportunity to walk through that some board members who've come, uh, to see the space. And I just, I just want to thank the community again. It was a big decision a few years ago to decide that, um, this particular group of students, uh, who are kind of non-traditional students, uh, were worth the type of, of significant investment the community made in, uh, in that. Uh, and to go from the space that they were in, in, in Sherburne School, to walk through downstairs, which really looks like a, you know, it looks like a small liberal arts college, uh, in that space now. Uh, it said, it really tells the students something significant about how, how they're bound. And, uh, and the staff, who have been, um, most of the staff that do this program for a long period of time, that their work with that population is valued. Uh, I think the other thing to appreciate as you walk through is the design of the space. The fact that it was staff and students helped design the space and dealing with parent. Uh, and that we had great partners, uh, you know, uh, both the architects and builders, who were very open to our staff and students, uh, being part of the process throughout. Uh, and, um, I just would encourage, I think we're talking about when we could do a general open house for the community. To have an opportunity for the community to see its investment, uh, and I'm looking forward to, uh, to that opportunity sometime soon. So with that, uh, just also wanted to, we just wrapped up. Uh, we spoke about the Italian exchange, uh, trip we, uh, I'm sorry, the Italian exchange, uh, visit we did with our Friendship City. Uh, we just finished the, the, um, a similar exchange with students from Nishin in, uh, Japan. Uh, we had three staff members, including principal, uh, from our sister school, um, from southern Japan, come over, uh, for a week. We had homestays, uh, we had, uh, visits to a bunch of different things, uh, in the community. Uh, the students, uh, went to classes at high school, we visited classes at Little Harbor School. Uh, and at the end of the whole thing, there was a, uh, a full school, high school, uh, assembly, uh, that welcomed the students back in. And our, uh, our students were outstanding. It's one of those things where sometimes you're not sure, end of the day, there's this, you know, uh, we don't all speak the same language and how are adolescents going to deal with that type of experience? And our, uh, I don't know, Nathan, I don't know if you, I hope we're in the auditorium, but the response from students was great. It was like, it was, uh, joyous. Uh, it was, um, it was just the right type of energy at the right type of moments, uh, throughout. And I thought so a lot about, um, about our kids, uh, and, uh, in our schools. So I just want to thank the folks for that. At last, I just want to say that, uh, our math, it's kind of the work that, um, we've been doing around math instruction. Spirit, uh, through Patty, through, uh, Stacy Weeks, uh, through, um, um, Shay St. Lorraine at the high school, uh, is really, really starting to show dividends, uh, and they were down at a conference at Gillette Stadium, um, a week ago.
Wednesday, yeah.
A week ago, uh, presenting about the majority and, um, sort of the, the challenges and successes so far of trying to convert our math curriculum, kind of from a curriculum where students, that's what I'll call it, do math, to a curriculum where students are thinking math. Uh, and I had the opportunity this week to walk through, just happened to catch, I went from first, second to fourth grade at Little Harbor and watched what already that was doing in terms of the quality of our pedagogy in, in, uh, math, uh, and how students were really able to conceptualize, uh, in a deeper way than I think what would be typical if we were following the old approach. So kudos to all the folks who are doing that work, especially the teachers on the ground, um, who are engaged in it all. But I think that's an initiative that's already starting to pay dividends. So thanks for all the folks.
Thank you, Zach. Anyone else have? I just, um, noted in the, um, uh, notification we get every week from the high school that, um, Joe Marquette, our Italian teacher, he was honored by, he received a national award for excellence in innovation in teaching Italian. So that was a, uh, a great recognition for our Italian teacher. And then also in that, um, notification we get every week, I, I never knew this, but at our high school, we have, and Lisa, we probably, Lisa, I'm sure knows all about this, is the president of the PTA for the high school. Uh, we have a mock tribal team in high school. Nathan, obviously we know about this. We have the model United Nations. We have a role model being in the United Nations. Then we have Social Justice Club. I mean, we have tons of more clubs than that, but those three particularly caught my eye this time. They were, they're organizations that are there now that weren't there when my kids were there. So it goes to show how our high school adapts to everything that's going on in the world. So I thought that was impressive. Um, anyone else? Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda. Um, we have minutes of the October eighth, twenty twenty four regular meeting. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes?
So.
Exactly. Okay, any comments? You can get it sent. Yes, hit.
Um, I just have one, uh, which is when we, um, when we selected the person to attend the, um, School Board Association Conference, um, doesn't know who we selected. And honestly, I've forgotten who ended.
Byron.
Okay, I thought, I thought it was Byron, but we just know that that was who was selected to do that thing.
Yes, we will do that.
Go.
Okay, good.
I was there.
This is.
They asked it.
It's, uh, item on our agenda that says committee updates, so you can.
Yeah, I haven't noticed that.
Okay. Okay, thank you for going, Byron. Thank you for that edit. On favor? I, any opposed? Okay. Not minutes passed. Next, we have our public comment, in person and remote. We will do the in-person first. Uh, what we'd like to tell you all is you have three minutes to speak. If you come up to the table, um, state your name and your address and Brian's going to time you. So, um, we usually have a more sophisticated way to time, but we're not at City Hall, so, um, we'll just give you a warning when you get nearly end. So if you could just come up, state your name and address and then, um, deliver your message to us. The first one is Kate, Adam.
Hello, Kate Adam. Uh, I emailed the school board, I'll leave yesterday and hope they get a chance to read my email. Um, I wanted to come tonight to reinforce the importance and the need, um, the school department to add a line item to the annual budgets for playground renovation and structure maintenance. I know the school department submitted a SIP request to tackle the larger elementary school renovations, which I truly appreciate and hope that the city council will agree to fund, um, on this important project. However, moving forward, I believe that the school department really needs to prioritize funding for the upkeep of these essential play spaces for elementary school students each year. Play is the work of the child, right? These playgrounds are the places where children expand their creativity, use their imagination, develop social skills, language skills, physical skill, and, uh, learn to adapt socially. I'd love to know how the school board plans to stay on top of playground maintenance once the bigger renovations are done. Is there a committee that does this, that can maintain, look at maintaining the playgrounds? Are members of the general public, like, participate? I'd love to be a part of a bigger conversation, um, about how to better manage these spaces moving forward. I know you can't engage in a conversation about this right now, but I'd invite any and all of you to email me, um, about this after the meeting so that we can work together to figure out a plan moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Next, we have Julie Gallow.
Hi, Julie Gallow, Tenletre Street. Um, so it appears that the redistricting conversation started back in May due to the school board budget requesting to reach a classroom portable set at Don Darrow for the fall of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. These classrooms were added to the nineteen classrooms that were full at Don Darrow to help with the ball classes in fifth grade and first grade to maintain citywide classroom sizes of less than twenty at the K through two classrooms and less than twenty-five in the three to five classrooms. It's my understanding based upon the current projections for class sizes, these portables will not be needed next year at Don Darrow and they will be back to their nineteen classrooms for the fall of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I understand the overall goal of the redistricting committee is to utilize classroom space equitably amongst all three schools. If this is the goal and Don Darrow does not need the portables next year, I am proposing a separate timeline be established that allows for more data collection as the decision is feeling rushed. In two thousand twenty-two, there was a redistricting committee that examined if redistricting was necessary for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. They concluded that redistricting was not necessary utilizing current K through five enrollment at the elementary schools, NASDAQ numbers and projections for new developers and realtors. It appears that the current redistricting committee's focus on data is the current enrollment and a fear that over enrollment at Don Darrow could happen again in the near future. What we do know is all NASDAQ numbers for Portsmouth show the school age population overall is declining. And what the school board found from developers and realtors in two thousand twenty-two is that there are few young families moving to these new communities or rental properties in Portsmouth. I am not sure what has changed since then except rise in housing costs. The reality is, this is not the first time Portsmouth has considered redistricting. I've been trying to get to the bottom of the supposed twenty sixteen redistricting and the twenty-ten redistricting, yet there's really not any data out there to show what was done and why. The closest I have gotten to something is that in two thousand sixteen, the Middle Street corridor was given a choice on where they wanted to go because Little Harbor was overcrowded. I do think speaking with the former leadership team, especially the superintendent, would be beneficial as this may be one of the only people at this level who may have any information. I would also like to ask the committee to take some time to evaluate the projected cost of redistricting. I know busing is a huge cost and I'm just kind of wondering what it would cost if there is projection for redistricting altogether, including busing. It appears that this redistricting committee is retroactively trying to fix a current problem of enrollment at Don Darrow due to the pressure from city council, which hopefully will be resolved next year when the fifth grade.
Kate, you have fifteen seconds.
Who's the middle school? I understand Carrie and Byron are concerned about awkward class spaces and are concerned about the buggers happening at Don Darrow, forcing current families and children with ties to their current schools and community to move for the potential that a buggier may come down the line again at Don Darrow seems inequitable to me. I do think slowing this conversation down and taking more time to make this decision would better serve our community. And I ask that if you do move students, it is done in a manner that will disrupt the least number of current students in neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nellie Clark.
Hi, um, my real name is Janelle Clark. I go by Nellie. Um, I'm at one fifty-two Essex. So I have, uh, three kids at New Franklin School in first, third, and fifth grade. Uh, I live in the Powder House neighborhood. And I'm wondering, if Don Darrow is too big and Little Harbor is too small, why do my kids have to leave New Franklin School? This is totally illogical to me and in no way would enhance their education. It's completely unfair to, to drag New Franklin School neighborhoods into this redistricting just to make a map tidy. I think all three schools are fantastic, but having kids playing musical chairs between schools is wrong. Please, at least let my kids finish out their education at New Franklin. Now let's talk about equity, inequality, and redistricting. There are equitable solutions that were already thrown out, putting K one, two, three, and four, five in schools. Or having the fifth graders using middle school have been thrown out. Why have these been thrown out? To me, this is, would be an equitable compromise that would put kids first. Let them stay with their friends. This is a change we could share together as a community and improve their educations. Yes, it would require some organizational change, but it takes the burden off individual targeted children in neighborhoods. Overall, I'm left with questions. It does not seem to me that there's a strong enough argument to redistrict and change all the lines. The high school is smaller than it ever been in Portsmouth. It's too expensive for families to move to. And who's to say we won't need to redraw these maps again in two years? How much are we really saving? And can you guarantee that my kids will be better off with their move from New Franklin School to Little Harbor? Please be mindful of this class of children. Their formative years were spent in masks, quarantining, and out of school with COVID. And anxiety and depression is more prevalent in school children now than ever before. Please, please, put kids and their education first. Put aside busing, walkability, unified arts. Let's talk about equality. Let's reexamine all these options. Fifth grade to the middle school and the K one, two, three, four, five option. Redistricting solutions should benefit all the kids and their education, not just some. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nellie. Next, we have Kyla Pine.
It's Kyla.
Oh, Kyla.
What's the problem?
You are Kyla Pine.
Uh, name's Kyla Pine. I live in Oriente Point Road. I'm here to talk about the proposed redistricting. Uh, from my perspective, I know from the perspective of the majority of parents here today and, uh, the parents that are at the meeting, uh, this past week at the library, that none of the options presented were viable unless they gave families the option to have their child or children continue to stay in mold at the school that they currently attend. It's a non-starter from our perspective, full stop. Forcing our children to change schools after they've already built a community with their peers and teachers isn't right. This is especially true given the disruption that many of our children have already experienced during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Asking them to once again make a big change to their school environment is just wrong. My daughter, a third grader at Little Harbor, has gone to sleep on another night this past week crying because she's asking if she has to change schools. I attended the meeting at the library last week and I listened closely to the video of the school board meeting from October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Carrie and Byron made some observations that they received a feedback from school administrators that not offering a transition plan was less disruptive from the administrator's perspective given their experience with the previous transition in years past. However, the school board members acknowledged that the school board has not sought feedback from the families that previously experienced this transition. No parent input was sought prior to that meeting. We as parents know what's best for our children. Carrie mentioned during the October eighth school board meeting that it was really important at the end of the day to follow the advice of the administration. I disagree with this. In my view, the number one input that the school board should be considering is the opinions of the parents that are voicing their concerns. At the four-minute mark at the top of the hour during that October eighth meeting in the video that I watched today, Carrie, Carrie said, quote, "We're not coming to your house and taking away," and then dot, dot, dot. She said, "You stop what you're saying." And that really stuck with me. And I just want to make it clear that by denying families the options to allow our children to stay in their current schools, the school board and the administrators are effectively coming to our house and taking away our right to do what's best for our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kyla. Next, we have Gardner Campbell.
How you doing? Gardner Campbell, a little bit two eighty-seven Middle Road. Um, and I don't have as much prepared as everybody else does, kind of off the cuff here, but, um, I, you know, more than anything right now, I want to emphasize my support to delay this process. I think that delaying this process, allowing us more time to analyze this and, and make data-driven decisions is going to be what's most important. Again, we're talking about the lives of children. I know the administration and school are extremely important, right? But we're talking about the lives of our children. I, I think that if there's a way that we can set it up where, I mean, ideally it's delayed, that would be amazing. If not, I think school choice is absolutely paramount. I think if kids have school choice and they can stay with their siblings and stay with their friends, I think a big problem would be solved. Assuming that we've done the analysis and we see the data and we say, yes, there is very high risk of a big boom. None of us want our kids in a school classroom with thirty other students. We get that, right? But I think delaying the process, allowing us more time to get more data, um, and to Kyle's point, to get more input from the families, not from administration, from the families. I don't know if it's a poll, if it's a survey or what it is, and I know that creates a lot of, kind of, you know, a lot of input from a lot of different areas, which is hard to decipher and hard to kind of keep everybody happy. But I think that we find probably a pretty common thread amongst most of the families in this town. Um, if we, if we did a little bit more due diligence behind it. And again, if that's not what can happen and if we absolutely have to make a change and this is what's moving forward, I think school choice is going to be what's most critically important to these kids. They absolutely have to stay with their friends. They have to stay with their siblings. No, no way around it. Every school in this town is phenomenal. I don't care if my kid goes to New Franklin or Don Darrow or Little Harbor. I just care that they stay with their friends and they have that consistency. I, as a kid, moved a ton. And I can tell you firsthand, it's miserable. I don't care if it's in the same town. When you're eight years old, nine years old, ten years old, you move away from your friends, that is a very big deal. Again, and to emphasize the point of these kids having gone through COVID on top of everything amongst the heightened anxiety that we all experience in today's modern world, I really, really think it's going to be in our best interest, in the best interest of the children, to delay this process and make this more a data-driven, uh, decision. So I yield a time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Patty, do we have anyone on the room? We have multiple attendees, but nobody second raised. So, I think. Oh. Elizabeth, you can speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
You speak up a bit?
Can you hear me?
We can, we can just barely hear her.
Um, okay, I will try to speak as loudly as possible. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Trevino. I live at ninety-five Monroe Street, so I'm in the Lafayette Park neighborhood.
Give it just a second. We're gonna see if we can do something on the, on the speakers here. Whether or not that make a difference.
Okay.
I don't want you to.
Can you just say something?
Hello?
Yeah, you still have muted.
Try it again?
Hello?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very.
I think it's maximized.
Yeah, we're, we're about nice.
Any, any better?
I can barely hear you.
Okay, I'll just try to be quick then. My name's Elizabeth Trevino. I live at ninety-five Monroe Street. I have an eleven-month-old daughter and I'm in the Lafayette Park neighborhood. I grew up.
Probably.
Can you?
Yeah. Is there? That better? It's gonna get weird. We'll see.
Do you try again, Elizabeth?
Elizabeth, try. We've got a different thing to try.
Uh, is this any better?
No.
Well. Why don't you close the door? No.
Yeah, that's, it's, enough. It's fine. Sure.
Well, Elizabeth, would you be able to send us an email? It goes to every member of the school board and the superintendent.
Okay, I will do that.
All right, thank you.
And our, and our apologies for the, for the issue. We're not in our normal.
I, can I?
Yeah, we're not in our normal place, so.
I would just like to say that I am in favor of redistricting, just for the record.
Thank you. Is that your number one? Well, I guess we're not going to.
Well, unless it's a mic issue on, unless it's a mic issue in her side, I have the same thing.
That's it.
If she's okay with us recording it, it could script it in your direction. Oh, never mind. But it's always scripted, like they can show what she's saying on screen.
She said she's been redistricting.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, Jane. Appreciate that.
Interesting.
Thank you very much, Jane. So the audio was captured on the recording. I guess it's just in the room. We can't hear. We apologize, Elizabeth. Jane, thank you. I didn't get the name and address to do.
Trevino.
Trevino.
Trevino. Elizabeth and address.
Trevino?
Yeah. Ninety-five Monroe Street. Change, change guys. Thank you.
Wow, right, right, good work.
We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Jane.
Oh. Thank you. Uh, we return to City Hall next time we want to. It's your question. Okay, thank you, everyone. We will move on to the superintendent's report.
Uh, so, um, two things here, overnight, overnight field trips, um, just again, notification for folks, uh, in regards to that. It's the, uh, it's a reciprocal, uh, Japanese trip. So we'll be sending, uh, twenty-six students, uh, in five chaperones, uh, to back Japan, uh, in the spring. Uh, and, uh, so it's not one you need to approve, it's just notification, uh, that occurring. Uh, then you also have, um, the, the email summary. I would say the things that have stuck out to me, and I know, talking with the committee around redistricting, uh, the core thing that came through several of the emails that we received, I, this part of the testimony we just got, and I think was a big part of the energy in the room at the library, um, the other night was around, uh, limiting the number of changelings. And so what's our ability, the midst of all the other things we're prioritizing, to really try to put that front and center. Um, I think that was pushed from the folks who attended and it was well-attended at the library in the end. Um, in that, in that, uh, conversation, I think you've seen some of the folks who spoke at the library or have come to the board, was folks who emailed us. So it included concerns about special education, community special education programming, uh, for folks, um, and to just, uh, generally being a space where if we can avoid, uh, for more students, um, having transitioned to new schools and away from front groups that, that clearly, uh, parents who are concerned about their kids experiencing that have vocalized, uh, the desire for that not to, uh, to, for us to try to move in that direction would be lessening the number of students who could potentially be involved. Um, but it does flow back to, you know, we have been talking about this space utilization, uh, issue, uh, and, uh, and really around two things, making sure we have fairness in programming. We talked about this here tonight at the library. Fairness in programming, not just down the road, right now, um, there is inequity in some of our, our programming options already due space. Uh, so it's trying to deal with an issue that's current, but also trying to deal with an issue that could be happening down the road. Uh, and the committee, um, the committee meets on Monday, uh, to have additional, uh, have additional conversations, debrief what happened in the library and take some, uh, and then decide the next steps. But I think the consensus amongst, and Carrie, Byron, Byron, the stuff that, you know, the consensus is we're seeing multiple more opportunities for, um, community engagement prior to there being your final recommendations for the score. So.
Yeah, uh, the other thing I'll add is, yeah, the intent is to meet with the committee next Monday at three thirty. Um, and to have another, at least one more, um, opportunity for, um, input from parents. Um, I think, uh, our hope is to get more refined with, uh, and clear on, you know, a specific plan instead of the host of options. Um, and some refinement around what transition will look like so that those inputs, um, from parents will have, um, uh, more clarity on those specific issues. Um, so I think that's our, our goal right now. Um, is, is looking again towards next Monday and then further input from parents.
I would be, Byron.
I would.
I'd say you're not.
Yeah, I would just add that, and, and I think it's, it's such a hard topic. I hate to hear I said something about taking children out of their homes or something. Um, definitely not my intention, but, I mean, I would, I, at the committee meeting, I'll recommend doing a survey that goes out more broadly. Um, though there was, uh, well, some of the results from those that did complete the survey, that was really like forum feedback, um, and some notes from the forums. Um, I think as we, I, I think from my perspective, you know, a, a lot of the challenge has been, um, not having a long history of numbers and data in the, at the level that we have them. And so so much of the work and how, like, and so many hours put into this. and so many hours put into this, it's just been, been about even, um, finding a process for how we map this and how we look at the community. Um, and I just wanna, I mean, if we went out to do forums and said, everyone, we have no plan and we have no thing, they would be outraged. And if we go out with, here's some plans that may be potential, and where we want to start a conversation, there's outrage. And so, you know, that was our best option. I think nothing is decided and I know that there's some skepticism that nothing is decided, but truly isn't. Um, and as things have gone, um, I'm much more hopeful that there are, is more leeway for allowing consistent school. They are, and having some transition, um, that's much slower. I would just say, in slowing down the process, um, meaning like not having something for next year. I do worry based on, um, the predictions of where development is in the, um, city that we will get to a point where we eliminate that choice, or we may have to limit our choice options just because schools are overcrowded. So although, um, I understand that, it's, um, we're working to, we also, Byron also put in a request for planning. We're working to update some of the data that we got last February from planning, um, and get a more current thing. So we are doing our best to be as responsive as we can. We ask for, um, just, if you can do kindness, at least just professional respect and communication and, um, give us that feedback. Um, and hang in there. We'll have more, um, outreach and feedback. Hopefully, um, the night, the, uh, with, again, it has to be discussed with the committee, hopefully the week of November eleventh. Um, because Halloween and the election really interferes with timing availability. Uh, there was also some things at the forum about having to get a babysitter. And so we want to find a spot where we can have childcare offered, um, so that everyone can attend. So those things are in the works just for feasibility and they'll be discussed at that meeting.
Yeah, I just wanna, um, thank you. I think this, um, I just wanna add, um, I think I've heard, um, concerns around, um, transparency, um, and, uh, making, so I just, um, something that's a goal of mine moving forward is to, to the best of my ability, um, make sure that we're, um, doing a good job of recording the conversations that we're having, um, making sure that those transparent to the community and that we're, um, you know, doing our due diligence, we're starting noticing. Um, it's certainly not the intent, um, of the members of the committee in any of this without, um, having proper inter- in the community and having proper noticing and like the practice of good governance. I think that's a really, uh, core, uh, belief of mine. And so, um, I'm disappointed in, uh, the, the current shape of the conversation around that specifically. And hopefully we can do a better job of that.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Um, I sent some of you an email recording hanging on, and I, I won't get into all the details because I know this is just under, um, under an email summary, uh, topic. And I, I was disappointed that we didn't have this on the agenda because it is such a big topic right now for the community. Um, and it's moving quickly, so I felt like it should have been part of our agenda tonight. But, um, I just, a couple of things I wanted to say, which is just, one, I found, I found it interesting that we didn't, we didn't vote at the last, when the, when the, um, initial proposal was made. We didn't vote on whether it was necessary to redistrict. I'm not saying I think it is or isn't, but we didn't agree as a board on whether or not that was happening. But I think the way that, that the committee is speaking, sounds like we are doing it and, and that it's a, it's a certainty. And so I'm concerned about that just because we're, we're creating a lot of chaos in the community that might not have to be created. But so it feels like on a board level, we should probably have that discussion immediately, um, before we proceed with all these options. But a- anyway, you guys are proceeding as you see appropriate. But that was my biggest concern, was that it just feels like we're telling people something's happening that may or may not happen. Um, and creating unnecessary, uh, uproar about it. Um, and then the other concern I had was just having the information available to people. And I think that's what I meant in terms of transparency, like it's coming. You guys are doing a good job of getting it out on social media, which I think we need to do. But I think we also need like a centralized location for the information through the school district to, to be available to everyone who wants to find it.
Okay, thank you.
And then who's on the committee?
The three of you. The three of us, the three elementary principals and Phil Davis.
Oh, they all are on.
Okay.
I thought you had sent you in like mail, but I didn't realize there were any numbers to you. Okay, thanks.
And I think, just, I was gonna say that at the library, I think there was an attempt to make sure this is clear. But my understanding is that the group was tasked with basically exploring whether or not redistricting is necessary and coming to a, coming to a proposal. Um, but that ultimately would come back to the board. I think that's what, so the board will be the decision. Um, and the committee had, and the several different things was like, this would be things that already we don't think we suggest. Here are some other things that are possibilities. And I remember specifically in talking to the community, I said, last first presentation, when Kerry says, here are some options. And the option that we ultimately can suggest probably isn't even in this presentation. Um, so ultimately, I think that's my interpretation of what this group is doing, which I think is correct, is developing a proposal go back to board with rationale. And that proposal could, um, right now, based on looking at stuff, the group has indicated their early kind of discussions. They, they don't anticipate saying, there's no need for, for any change. Um, but that ultimately would come back and say, this is the proposal and here's rationale from the group as to what we should do. But then the board can do with that, whatever it wants to do with that. Uh, and I think that's the understanding of everybody who's on, on the group, that, that they're doing the work. Uh, and, um, and I would say in this particular case, it's really, this isn't always the way it is. The two board members are doing, you know, this work of, of building a dataset that we never had before. Uh, going really deep into, um, trying to understand this and have database kind of decision-making. Uh, and, um, I think the staff is, 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 um, consulting on the side based on their experience and what they've, um, what they've seen. Uh, I will say that one thing, just to be clear, because those administrators were on, on the, um, committee, a couple of people tonight spoke about, uh, that the committee heard from administrators that not having an option was, um, uh, for families was the right way. That's, that was not true. That's, it was, we met with staff and there was, um, a few staff members who indicated that that was something that they thought we should consider, which we had not considered going into that conversation. It's not, uh, so I just wanted to make sure it was clear that it wasn't principal saying, don't give anybody any options. So that's not the case. Um, so, anyway, it's a much deeper conversation, but I would say that's my, my understanding of, of the task of the group and what the group is trying to move towards. Um, and then that ends a formal conclusion.
Okay.
All right, oh, Lisa, I just had one quick question in all those emails. How are we answering this table? Is anybody taking the lead to write back to people and giving them specifics on their?
I think both Byron and I are.
Go ahead.
And I am too, and I just thank them for the email and appreciate their input.
I, I think, um, I've responded to up till yesterday.
Okay, good.
I've responded to everyone, um. But yeah, I don't, I think there's been a couple more that have come in since then. So, yeah, um. Yeah, so I'm doing my best to, um, you know, at least, at least respond to those. And just to the first point, I was never our intent to try and take it to the board or have a formal conclusion. Um, so apologies and, uh, if that was like, it was read that way. Um, we very much, um, we wanted to eventually come to the board with a specific recommendation that the board voted on. Um, and so, you know, that's, that was always the intent from my perspective there.
Yeah, actually, the irony of the original presentation, which was not a fully developed set of proposals, was to be very transparent and incremental step in the thought process of where, where people were in the process. So it would be, you know, as opposed to waiting till the end and saying, this is the final proposal. And it's like, hey, here's where, here's where things are, you know, kind of with the data that we have and the spot that we are at this moment. Um, and what do you think about this set of, this set of initial ideas?
Question. Will we document the process as well as for the data perspective?
Um.
We, um, on, is it the data process, like, for example, or?
Well, the, the data process as well as the decision-making process. I think that's gonna end up being important for not just now, but will we end up having to consider this again in the future?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. And I think, you know, to one of the congressmen tonight, I think, twenty seventeen, twenty ten. Um, and so I think at the end of, um, when we come to a place where we have the recommendation, I think in, in that report should detail, um, the process that we took to get that recommendation. And there's probably the, you know, I'm talking here, I think that's the best way to go about presenting that and sort of in the final recommendation, saying this was the process I'm hoping to gather. Yeah.
I have to say, I think that's not the way we should look, because I think that's where we run into transparency issues and people feeling like they don't understand the process. I think we need to know about the process while it's happening.
So I will say the, what I'm hearing in the question and, and Byron's response is a little different. So, I mean, I, the process, I think that's, we're talking about is like, we received an export of all of the kids. We geo-voted them this way. We mapped them on this. Like, it's not, that, those are the pieces, not like, uh, we made decisions in this way.
No, and the decision-making process, because I think we're gonna need to actually be able to support the decision that we made. Maybe we're gonna ask questions for the process. And then we need to be able to have that process for future decision-making, apparently according to our conference meetings. We don't have that. We don't have a good documentative process for how we've gone about doing this.
I, I sent.
So you just take my, the same, Steve.
Look, okay, Brian.
I mean, I don't know how much you've looked at the slides from the last meeting, but there's a lot of good information in there that they put together on what the problem statement was. Sort of have a, um, but I think that's a good starting point and transparency, I felt was there, of course. Um, but I think, um, I think it's in there, is what I'm saying. So, I mean, there's things that are missing, you know, let them know, of course. But I, I felt pretty comfortable on your thought process of why you had come up with the options and what your thinking was, uh, in those slides. That was pretty good. Uh, so maybe it might, might have been missed.
I mean, I, I do appreciate that and I tried to explain this before, but I, our format in those meetings has been to do those slides and to be developing and editing those slides. So those slides are the, I mean.
And then they had a result, but they're not the discussions that would led to the results.
I mean, I.
That's what I think we're missing.
I don't, I don't have the capacity to do that. I have spent two hundred hours on this project to this point. And so if the board wants to have someone come there, take narrative notes. But I also don't feel comfortable asking the administrators who need their, desperately need their expertise to sit back from that conversation and just focus on note-taking. So, I mean, I think, I hear, I hear the piece, the transparency part is like, I, I need more specific asks for how did this happen? Because in my mind, everything in that PowerPoint is exactly the result of each of those meetings. The principals, the process, the priorities, the this.
And, yeah.
I think you're getting those from the specific questions.
I, I, yeah, I think this is, I don't know how to go back and fix, um, in terms of the record for the previous meetings. I don't know if that's something that's like, that can be done in terms of like rewriting those narratives. I think if it, I think it will be helpful going forward, um, to have Zoom recordings of all the meetings. Um, and to Kerry's point, like, um, you know, as board, as board members, that we have our policies. Frankly, note-taking in there, there is not one that's other strong to define. So, um, and I'm very quickly realizing this. Um, so I think the recording is going to be very helpful for me in terms of that record, um, and I'm happy to have it. Um, so I'll just say that, but as to like, the decision, like, I think we can put, to this point, I think we can do our best to, um, provide a record of what the decision process was and the power of reports for these initial meetings. But I don't know how to do something different than that, um, as you want.
And again, my question is not about transparency, it's about the process and how we do this again successfully in the future.
Yeah.
Cause you guys were basically having to, to lay the groundwork, right? And, and that's my biggest concern is, if we're gonna do a process to do consistently when we come to a situation where we have to redistrict in the future, let's have a roadmap and be able to do that.
I think one of the things in the part that goes back to, or the idea of like, how did it get done? Where are the notes? How do we do this? What did this process look like? I, uh, to be honest, we haven't programmed any good of all those prior processes. And I don't think that prior data is helpful because there's been a bunch of interim, um, components that have happened. So when Don Darrow was designated as a, whatever school that was, I don't know.
Succeed, school in need of improvement.
School in need of improvement, then there was school choice. So the many Don Darrow families went to Little Harbor. So we didn't have an accurate representation of the Don Darrow community going to Don Darrow. And so those chapters are where we really took off on this, like, we really got to understand the neighborhoods and what the actual numbers are. Not, and, and when that school choice happened, families were grandfathered, which is a fine decision. I'm not critiquing that. But that just ended two years ago in the elementarys. So there were still kids that had been grandfathered in this time, not that they were huge numbers. But I'm just saying that the historical numbers in the schools are not a good representation of the neighborhoods that, that, that made up those numbers. And now that we have moved away from those things, I think it's interesting to recognize that Don Darrow's members have, are the ones finding. And we know that's somewhat guided by new development, but it's also just that, you know, it, it may be more that without that school in need of improvement designation and the school choice, the natural thing has happened. So that makes sense.
Okay, why don't we wrap this up because we have to, we have to move on.
Yeah, why don't I get that?
The next meeting is Monday. It's a committee meeting. It's not a community meeting, but anyone can attend, um, by, you know.
It's a public meeting of the committee, so, so.
Committee, correct. Okay. And where will it be?
School, our school, we're concentrating and we're working on, um, on Zoom for that, so.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you again, Byron and Kerry. Thank you for countless, countless hours of work and research and, um, bringing it all together and good luck as you move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sure you can, um, can, and thank you for the input of, you know, the other board members.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on. Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay, we will move on to the administrative report.
Yes.
Brian?
Let's see your, uh, budget report, uh, in the back, I don't know if I'm citing it, but, uh, it is, yeah, there's nothing really that sticks out, uh, to me on this report. It is still remaining here. Although I will share that next, uh, month, there will probably be an extra page on this report. Uh, stating that requires that we disclose our revenues to the board each, each month. Um, so there'll be an extra page on there. I'm not exactly sure it's gonna look. I mean, very similar to this, but revenue comes out a lot differently and we don't get a lot of revenue. Yeah, so it's gonna be a very simple, uh, report, but that will be required by state, so you'll see that on, uh.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, Lee.
So I just had, I would get three questions, probably pretty, I'll say naive. Um, I'm just wondering how many teachers' positions were actually filled by either fully fulfilled or partially fulfilled by grants last year versus this year?
They, they're, they're pretty much the same now. This year, it's just what it is, is sometimes if the grant comes in lower, you don't fund a hundred percent of it. You may fund eighty percent of it and then twenty percent come out of the general fund.
Okay. Uh, second question was, how many maintenance staff did we, did we need in order to be fully set? I believe we need two more to one. And then my last question, are there any ideas on ending out district, uh, placement costs and how are we expecting them like?
Uh, we are, we're having a, having to, one, one conversation because we definitely saw a spike, uh, last year. Uh, and so we don't, I would say there's not, I mean, ultimately, if we're doing this process right, um, you know, we're not making decisions based on dollar or making decisions based on least restrictive opportunity for a kid, um, to receive the services they need in order to receive an education. Uh, and so, so if that's the case, you know, the part of fixing addition placements is not going to the table with a sharpie or pencil. Uh, but it, it does. Uh, but it it does put us in always this on, I think you talked about this before, this ongoing conversation about when do we have clusters of kids which would create. Uh, an economy scale where we could build programs in-house. Uh, and so I think that we're always on the lookout for when are those opportunities arising, I would say that the moment. We, I, you know, we are experimenting something that's a little bit different at Don Darrow right now. Uh, where we have, uh, some students who have, uh, a little bit higher need, uh, who are being. More closely serviced through the coordinator at at Don Darrow and are using a room as a hub. Um, but this is a, but it's an experiment. Uh, and, uh, so I think, I think our staff is staying, um, entrepreneurial, not in terms of. The funds, but entrepreneurial, just kind of thinking about how to be creative in terms of programming. Uh, I think that remains a, a thing, uh, for staff, and again, we're just, we're always looking for. Where is that cluster of kids that could potentially drive us to sign a program in the future? Also, very often, um, you know, identifying that that cluster and knowing this is not, there's enough there. That's sometimes can be, you know, that's, that could be eighteen months out, that we identify, then build it, the budget, build it. Um, space it, you know, do all those, those types of things. Um, so those are ongoing conversations, but I would say not with. Um, any elements of the bullet to sign that on.
I will add too that we've had Zach and I and staff have had conversations. Regardless, exactly what you're talking about, one of the issues, uh, that I brought up is when you have a quarter student. When this court ordered to go out of districts, uh, we don't have a lot of, but when they do. Uh, fortunately, the court's been doing lately, the last couple of years, been saying. All right, why don't you guys work it out amongst yourselves and decide what's gonna happen, but what happens when. When they say that, so we pick up on ourselves cost, forty, forty percent out of districts, or certain school. They should get some of the costs.
Yeah.
So I've been pushing, making sure that we push back on that, to make sure all the court. Trying to look like they're being nice, they're trying to save money, well, we are also trying to save money. So it's, it's, uh, something that I made a point that we need to do with every court case, make sure that they are paying their fair share. Thanks for the point.
Um, approximately, I don't need an exact, um, how many students are out of district?
Um, I don't, and, uh, let me come back to you with the number for me.
Okay.
I was gonna say, I don't wanna just log it out there, I wanna be precise based on where we're at, because each one of those students can be, you know, they can be. I mean, let me come back to the number for me. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bernie. Let's move on to old business, consideration and approval of policies, second reading.
Yep, okay, um. Let's see, we're gonna keep the, uh, first one separate because there is at least one more number that's still, but then we haven't got to hear yet, um. So I would entertain a motion to. Do approve the second reading of environment quality and water quality.
So.
Yep, second, thank you. All right, um, in terms of the discussion we had, um. There have been some, so it's been around for a while now, it's, um, we've had some. Um, updates that the administrative administration suggested, it's quite a while ago now, I guess, uh, in the back of my. Um, and I believe it was also, there were also some updates from NH, NH, N H S B A. Um, but I know Lee wanted to comment on it at some point, you, you wanna share any of your specific thoughts on it?
I mean, I, I think I, yeah, I think you brought in that opportunity, um, you know, I think I'm still concerned about, you know, the fact that we're. We're trying to improve air quality and suggesting one of the methods be, you know, a focus on reducing emissions outside of the school. You know, I do think that that's a good approach, but, you know, I think to, to strike out. The ASHRAE standards and trying to actually at least attend to those when. You know, that is a global organization that whose literally their mission is improving building, building systems. Energy efficiency, indoor air quality, uh, sustainability, and they do that for research and standards writing, I think that's. I think we're not doing our, our students a disservice. Um, well, I, you know, from my own perspective, I worked a, a business case to see in the C I E process last year. Um, I think it was poorly looked at, and, you know, from that perspective, I think we. We are not looking at opportunities that actually reduce our energy costs and serve the needs of our students if we actually do one of the, we are. So.
Sam, can you speak to why those, why, I think you had already mentioned eliminating them, right? But, yeah.
I thought it's in the model, the model policy.
The model. Eliminated, yes, yes.
If I recall, it, I mean, it has helped there a lot, like the. American College of Gynecologists recommends more gynecology exams than the, you know, American College of Gynecologists, and I thought that was part of the. Concern is that this is, oh.
So I can't speak for, I can't, I, so what I, just to recap what I had discussed. I, I can't speak for the School Boards Association in terms of their decision to remove that, I don't know how much that was based on statutory change. Or if it was just a tr- some other choice, the School Boards Association. I, I was, I that night discussed how in, um, Vermont Ashray was a controversial topic during COVID.
That's true.
Uh, and so there was regulatory, there were battles. Um, there was, the state set certain standards and. And honestly, I had, I had union fights in some portions of the bill that was around, well, the state has this standard, but. We think you should use this set of standards from the industry. Um, and so Ashray became a bone of contention, uh, amongst some staff. Um, and ultimately, we kept referring back to the Vermont Department of Health standards, uh, which did not utilize all of them. They didn't carbon copy everything from Ashray.
And that's, I think, similar to what was done with the model policy, which removed Ashray as a. Standard, and the National Department of Education has a checklist that includes some of the language from Ashray that doesn't adopt it wholesale. So I think that that's the balance that the Department of Ed was trying to strike. And probably ultimately the decision at School Board Association went with the wording we need.
So I think my second argument was almost last time that we actually did review, uh, the checklist, that was. That's something that actually is listed in, in the. Report of education requirements, and I, from what I understood, based on that question last time, is we haven't answered the work of.
Yeah, I can't speak that one again.
Well, that is one of the things that ends up in our policies a lot is to, to put specific, um.
But it's not necessarily our policy to, it's actually the school or it's, uh, where educational.
It is, yeah, but we have the, we have the authority to add things we want to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which we have done to some policies, we've said we need, we need to ensure that this is done once a year or two years or whatever, so. That is something that we could.
And we got it up so that we can edit it right now live and agree on it here instead of having to push it back to policy. So that we can maintain the momentum that we've got in policy committee. So if that's wording that we wanna add, we can add it right now.
Yeah, my, my question on this is, was the practical effect of the administration's perspective of Ashray being in here? Or it's not just currently the policy we have adopted as Ashray in it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and this would be a change, so from a practical, uh, standpoint. How would that change, um, how is it administered? And like, uh, uh, the downstream from that, what is the practical effect to students there?
Uh, I have good, not a question I, I would need additional time to be able to answer that question, yes.
The other big change to this policy, just to refresh folks' memory, this policy had originally only been. Um, about air quality, they've now added this part B, which addresses the water quality part. Because it's required by law, we needed to put it on for a vote for tonight.
Let me try to ask a different way on the Ashray. If we leave Ashray in, how burdensome and or is it like, is this policy in enforceable as far as like?
It depends on what the separation of the, of those two sets of standards are, so from the Department of Ed versus.
Yeah.
Ashray, which is not strictly limited to educational environments, uh, and they're not, they're not, uh, bureaucratic. System, they're an industry association, so, um. So for, so I would say of the, of the two. And I generally, but again, I can, this could be formed through my experience, I'd rather have. The, the state tell me what I need to be doing, uh, cause it's gonna have to adjust to a part of whatever the realities are. What I'm, what I'm doing, uh, as opposed to a, to, um, to one industry, one industry association. Making that set of choices that doesn't have to incorporate any other variable responsibility they suggest. So.
Um, creating conversation, I think I am, um. I, I would worry that there could even be conflict between the DOE, um, standards and those, so I, I would, um. Like to see this move over as is, without.
I'm sure.
Ashray.
Yeah.
Um, and focus on the New Hampshire Department of Education checklist.
Okay, any more discussion? Shall we have?
Well, I wanted to entertain the concept of putting in, um, a timeline for testing because it doesn't, doesn't appear to include anything about when, how often it has to happen.
If I remember correctly, it's actually listed, but the data is behind what you're saying.
The data in terms of how.
The requirement that the board act or the school board actually, the checklist on an annual basis, I forget what the timeline is, but it's got lots of data. And I think that it's actually called the standards, it's just being executed.
Yeah, and it's called the, the water, it's about water, well, I assume anyway, in terms of the, it, it knows the RSA there. Um, okay, well, is there any further discussion else?
Do we wanna make that addition? Or, uh, adding annual?
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly open to it, what about the just.
I think it's.
I would.
Of the RSA.
Yeah, rather than having a timeline for it, yeah. How, how would you?
If we're saying one thing, like in terms of, oh, we're gonna follow word of education and, and their requirements, then.
Yeah.
We've already listed the RSA, there is a, a requirement for us to get the checklist on an annual basis.
It doesn't say on an annual basis though, does it? I, that is not all we need.
No, not, not in the policy, I mean, I would say that's.
What if we just added on line fourteen? Um. I should start back a little ways, on line fourteen, it says, um.
Oh, it says to annually investigate.
It's saying.
Yes. You know, and I quickly was reading it, it already does my.
Okay, that's great.
On line twelve.
Yes, you're right, okay.
Sorry, I missed it.
That's good, I missed it too, um. All right, then I guess we'll go forward with the vote to approve it as is. Thanks for your, Lee. Um, all those in favor of passing the air call? Any votes?
Are you opposed?
No, I meant, I meant to raise my hand.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Everybody was. Um, okay, so I missed it. All right, thank you. Um. Now, we can keep going, um, individually, or I would at least suggest that we consider the next two together as a block because they. Um, are, they, uh, are the same topic.
Moving to approve, uh, the second reading, I M R.
Second, great. Um, okay, these we've seen before, um, one of them is the policy on exemption health education. And then the R version is the, um, form that parents can fill out to have their children exempted from specific topics. Um, we were very lucky to have Carrie review and, um, give us some. Some major updates, um, on this language from her medical perspective, and, uh, so you'll see on I M R, there are. New, um, items for the checklist, there are fewer of them and their. Uh, their language is updated from the very updated language that existed before. And then we also recently had the principals of the buildings review this document to just ensure that it felt appropriate to them. And they did make one change, which was to, um. Suggest or to, to be clear that the, the student being exempted. Would only be exempted from that class on the day that these subjects were taught, not from the class as a whole. Um, and again, we went back and forth as committee about whether or not it was best to have a checklist or to have an open. Um, input block on this form so that people could just say anything, but we elected to do it this way to it. Offered specific options for, um, the teachers and clarified for those handling these forms, exactly what. Did people could or could not, or would or would not be exposed to. Um, so, okay, I'm sorry, I was.
I have a question, so. Oh, I was just gonna say, I think these, that was on a lot of time on this, the language, and I think. This is much more modern than the, um, AIDS era language that was in here before, um. And I, I, my favorite is, um, exempting from instruction on health relationships. Because I, that's what we talk about now, we don't, like, we talk about, you know, the, the assets, the good parts first, and, um. It's not, they need to be worked on.
Yeah, and there was also, I forgot to mention on the, um, the policy itself. There were some changes that just came in the fall update as well from N H S B, okay, so in a way it was good that we held on to these for a little longer. Um, and that included in line eight of that policy, um, adding programming, not just instruction, but also programming about in these subjects. And then I believe it's all the highlight, highlighted language, I don't know if we have the highlighted version, but, um. There was some new language that came out from, we added it, we did discuss a bit, but ultimately it didn't change our. Um, it didn't change the meaning of the. Policy and it's required by law, so we didn't have a lot of options to do anything different. Um, just.
Let me, I have one question about how we're interpreting scope of this. I do really like the not so nineteen eighties, um, language on the form, I think that's a really overdue improvement. But I was curious, I mean, we're talking about, you know, organ donation in a biology class, or we're talking about relationships in a context of talking about a book. Maybe it was a classic, is this only gonna deal with health and sex ed specifically? It doesn't allow people to opt out of whole other units, science or other classes.
No, we do have another.
I just wanted to make sure that.
We do have another policy that does that.
Right.
Um, but, okay, this is specifically for our health and sex education.
That was on.
And that was part of the name change too, right, exemption from health education instruction.
Yeah, I forgot, right.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and in fact, um. Yes, I for, I forgot to mention that we elected to change the name of the title of the policy as well, because it felt like it didn't. Address it quite as well the way it was before. All right, anything else on those two? Then I'll take a vote, all those in favor of passing I M and I M R. Okay, any opposed? All right. Um. Now we have advanced coursework and standard dual enrollment. Um, this one, uh, we did change. Uh, we, what we did, again, this one has been workshopped quite a bit with, uh, principals and committee. Um, and ultimately, with advice from. Um, Principal Penosi, we eliminated the term advanced placement because that is a, um. Brand, not a, an actual, um. Course or, or not appropriate description for what we provide. And as, as you know, we've all, we've been moving away from advanced placement courses in favor of dual enrollment. So in our recent work on this policy, um, the discussion centered around trying to. Have equitable access to dual enrollment courses and advanced coursework for all subjects rather than just C T E, which is addressed. In part B of this policy, so we added a little bit of language to try to make those, the two sections, um. Similar and match, for some reason the C T E. Similar and match, for some reason, the C T E or the STEM piece is what came through and from the N H S B A. But um. But we felt like it was important to, to address all coursework equally. So that's what the new additions are, you see. Other questions about this policy?
Motion to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry, this says.
Oh, wait, I, did everyone motion for this?
Well, we didn't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Right, um, motion to approve, I guess all three. There's only two left.
Two, I, I M D C.
Um, there are three.
There's, there are I H C D.
There are I M D C, or I M D.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. Oh, okay, sorry.
I'd like to pull out I H C D and I M D, with apologies, but I have specific questions on each of those still.
Well, why don't we just do a motion for all of them? And then you can ask, we can vote for all one, I'm sorry.
Give me a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
One second.
One, one second.
Tish, seconded.
Okay, so now we can talk about them, okay, so your motion was to approve all three?
Yes.
Okay, um. Well, I think we can still talk about them.
Yeah.
All of them, of course, yeah, so, um, so we're starting with um.
Advanced coursework.
Does anyone have?
I have to.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry, that should have.
Oh, but if you're pulling out two out of three, then it doesn't make sense to make a three. Mo, like a.
Motion.
If there's changes, you can still talk about the changes or the questions, right?
Yep. But I have to vote yes or no on all three as a batch under that, if that's what I'm thinking.
Oh.
Logistically, but. That's right.
Do you wanna withdraw your motion? We'll do one at a time.
Four.
Oh, and Tish, oh, okay, all right, spot over again.
Okay. That's, it's my fault, I started talking about one before you even asked me. So.
So do you, should we have a motion for um?
For the first one? Yes.
Yeah, motion to pass I H C D. That's right.
Thank you. Okay. All right, does anyone have any questions or comments about? I H C D.
Okay, so I just have one question, which I did bring to the policy committee. But since that's not a venue where I would be able to discuss the rationale, I just wanted to put it out here for the board. I still feel like there's an equity issue with this policy. Where we're providing considerably more support to students in the STEM and C T E context to take dual enrollment and advanced coursework. Than we are to students who pursue that outside of STEM and C T E. So I would still like to consider um taking out, basically copying um lines thirty one to thirty five. That are under C T E section and repeating them above section A. Because I think that otherwise we're giving considerably more support to students in the context of C T E. For pursuing advanced coursework than we are outside of C T E. And I think that's been an ongoing problem in high school, we have a really strong C T E program, which is fantastic. And the amount of support that students receive, but I'd like to see that. Culture of support extend beyond C T E of students that are pursuing advanced coursework outside of that program.
What, what were this set of lines?
So it's lines um thirty one and number two. Um, I guess generally would be thirty one to thirty four, so superintendent shall also designate a point of contact for the program. Who can provide for student counseling, support services, course scheduling, managing, that whole sentence. I'd like to see that repeated in section A. Because I think that students, especially now that we don't have advanced placement, are increasingly needing to pursue options beyond just what's offered in high school. Which they routinely do in C T E with support, but if they do it outside of C T E, they kind of need to do it on their own. Um, so that's the rationale.
But I know there was some discussion about this at the policy committee meeting, um, where I think. My understanding was that the. School counselors are responsible for this, but I think logistically, it sounds like that's not really. Getting kids to where they need to be, so I, I share your thought about them.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I felt like from a purely from like the, the way the policy is written. I felt that um on line eight in A, where it says school districts administrators. And school counselors provide assistance to the schools. I felt like it was superfluous to bring up the, this was my, just talk, talk from when I was still writing the policy. I felt that it was purposeful to bring up thirty one to thirty five. Um, I think. If it's creates more clarity and is uh a better, a better deal as far as administration. I think for my perspective, I'd be, I'd be supportive following up thirty one to thirty five. Um. You know, in this, in this, in that case. Yeah.
And I think it would be just that one sentence, Brian says thirty one to thirty four, I think I misunderstood, but that last sentence, it starts on thirty four and that wasn't really five, it's just.
And would it replace something, for the areas, think it would replace line eight or?
Well, I think, I think they can just copy and paste it, or we could replace, I mean, I think the issue is in section A. We're just basically sending go see a counselor and then in section B, we're offering a bunch of specific things to kids. In terms of they will get support services and help with scheduling and managing and paperwork. And I think that students should receive that whatever course of study they're pursuing.
Ultimately, that does go through, through the customs.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I guess.
Which is okay though, because it doesn't have to, it doesn't, it doesn't have to not be the school counselor. You can, it just ensures that kids are getting that support.
Yeah.
I know you just.
Yeah, I just, I just, it sounds to me more like a practice issue as opposed to like a policy issue. Cause it sounds like they're supposed to be getting the support. I mean, if, if. I guess I don't see the change of adding that.
And why put it in, in section B?
It's in section B because of the statute that requires this. And when the, this was back in two versions earlier, so back in the twenty teens. That it was added specifically to provide the bridge to the community college system. Through law.
Right, and I guess what I'm suggesting is that we should provide the same bridge to the community college system to all of our students, not just the students who do STEM and C T E. And that's why I'd like the language to be replicated.
So I, I, I wasn't in on the, the conversation on policy, so I don't know, like, I have read some of them that are from. Um, some of the stuff that came from the high school. Um. Did we identify? Like an ongoing gap at the DE? I guess I'm trying to figure out, but if there's the, if the language intended to plug a hole. Are we seeing a clear hole?
Yes, yes. And totally we're seeing a clear hole.
So, so we have anecdotes.
Yeah. Experience.
That there are holes.
Experience, yeah.
In the, in the nature of the support between section A and section B. What, what did the high school staff have to say about that? Was that part of policy's conversation or was that?
I don't think they waited.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm just, I'm rereading those sentences over and over again. Um, and I understand what's being said about having the um on line thirty one, it's very specific. On line eight, um, it's, it's not as specific. But it does kind of, in my mind, does cover the same thing. That if we were to change it and I'd be in favor of that. Um, it would be to replace line eight where it starts, the school district administrators, blah, blah, blah. Um, I think they're kind of saying the same thing, but one is, is definitely more specific. I agree with you, I mean, from my perspective, I think specificity in policy would help send a message to these uh. The students to get the same experience regardless of the advanced coursework they're pursuing. And then how they, and, and, you know, and add that, it can still go through guidance and it can still be done however the high school wants to handle it. But I think it would be appropriate to send them that message in policy, it'd be expected to be the same.
Nathan, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I guess my only thing is in line nine, maybe instead of after provide. We take out assistance as soon as we wish to enroll, so it's just throw in. Student counseling, support services, course scheduling, managing, course forms, and student registration, yah, yah, yah. Cause I just feel like ultimately it's, they're sort of saying, like what you were saying, sort of saying the same thing. Because my scheduling goes through either the administration or guidance, so that can just, I feel like you can just throw that into that one. But I don't know, it's.
Would someone like to vote a specific amendment to do this?
Um, so I'll move to take um. On line thirty two, after provide, for student counseling, support services, course scheduling, managing, course forms, and student registration. Program evaluation, course transferability, assisting with online courses. And to replace after provide on line nine through the end of the sentence with that.
Second. Excellent, can you just tell me where you started?
Cause actually, it's, it's after provide at the end of the sentence.
Why bring it up?
I don't think I have the word document of, I haven't prepared for the other.
Oh, I think. I think as long as you just tell me what you started with.
So line thirty two, when you hit uh after provide, it says for student counseling.
I see, okay.
To the end of that sentence, and then go to line nine. And right after provide, eliminate assistance and everything after that and replace it with the form.
And thank you to Nate for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Just that. Lisa, do you feel like that addresses your concern?
I think that is an excellent, yes.
All right.
We're teaching our students on.
No, that was, that was. Your motion to approve. Oh, somebody else gave the motion to, the motion.
Can we get a second on the? Thank you.
Yep. Okay, uh, is there any more discussion? Okay, so we'll take a vote on um. Approving that policy with the recommended change. Which has been identified, go ahead and say it. I think we are, okay, of all those in favor.
I.
Any who opposed? Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay, is there a motion to approve alternative credit options, I M D C?
That moves.
Second.
Thank you. Um.
Oh, I knew this.
I actually don't, that's what I'm. Oh. Um, so. Byron, do you want to say what you remember? Cause actually I'm, I'm, I can set up different policy and not.
Sure, I'm doing that here. Um, so there was two. There was two credit, was it two different policies?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
There was the previous, there was one, which was STEM related, if I remember. Um, this one was world language, right?
Mm-hmm.
No, that's the next one.
Yeah, so we're on, um.
I M D C.
Alternative.
I think this one, as I recall, wasn't. We didn't, um, we didn't actually have much discussion about it, but instead we just copied essentially what N H S B A had sent us for.
That, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay, then that.
It's the, it's the next one that I think we're both, yeah. Um, so. With all that information. And there are other questions about this policy? Okay, we'll take a vote. Um, all those in favor of passing I M D C?
I.
Any opposed? Me, Ray, and I are opposed.
No, it was just different, I said I and I said in.
Drop the boss.
All right, here's the one we were, uh, we were all, you know, um, that did require a little more discussion.
I M A D.
Is there a motion to?
It's not their national.
Is there a motion to pass I M?
Gee.
A D, sure.
Second.
Thank you. All right, so this one did include world language, however, we recommended removing the um, that. Uh, designation because um, we wanted it to apply to everything, not just the language. Um, and there was considerable discussion about this. And mostly related to how it um currently operates. Because there was quite a bit of confusion in the last year about math credits moving over from seventh grade to ninth grade. Um, so we did receive input from principals and there's a large, Patty, would you like to speak to the work that's going on around this?
There's a lot of, so what I can say, because I don't want to rehash what's in the notes of the policy committee that was included with the memo. But the work has been done to align the coursework at eighth grade algebra. So that the course that is happening in eighth grade that is called algebra is actually the same as the algebra course that's happening at the high school. As it currently sits this year, it is not the same. There is, this is a year of transition. Where previously algebra was being offered to eighth graders and were coming out, going into the high school when it was time for algebra two. Assumptions were made that algebra one being covered at the middle school was the same as the high school, and so algebra two could start and it may be fine. That was found that would not be the case. So the alignment is happening this year where there's a year of sort of calibration to get. The eighth grade uh curriculum where it needs to be as part of our ongoing work of a strategic plan. And as of next year, algebra at eighth grade and algebra at the high school, algebra one. Will be the same course, using the same materials with the same expectations, the same assessments, all of that's going to be the same. So um, that work has happened. You know, it's been going on since last year, a lot of the work that we're doing to write what's happening with math at the high school is involved with this. So that's where this is sort of coming together. And we should be at a place next year where our students will be having the same course in both locations.
And then another piece that came up was communicating all of that.
Exactly.
By students and their families and the, um. And as Patty mentioned, there is a memo um that was attached to the um policy committee minutes. That I would recommend you look at if you're interested in this because um, it does lay out what's gonna happen this year and what's gonna happen next year.
And what's also important to point out, just so that folks who are gonna watch this later on, or anybody who might be on watching right now. Even if you are not finishing algebra one in eighth grade, there is still a pathway to get the most difficult math. By senior year in high school. That, that is still laid out, the way the courses are set up, you can still do that. So if students or families are feeling, geez, if I missed algebra one in eighth grade and I'm, I'm behind, that's not the case.
It's a complete false notion, cause I took algebra long freshman year, I'm still able to do.
Thank you. Yeah.
So that's, that's really important for families to understand that. Um, and also to, to the end of people understanding, we, uh, we did, right, by adding. A um clause in here about annual communication to middle school parents and students so that they would be aware of. What those expectations are, because we realized there was difficult around communication in the past.
Lisa?
So I just have one question about this, which was for the students who are in eighth grade right now, taking world language for their algebra one. Once we pass this policy, we're changing the rules effective immediately, so I just want to understand for the kids who are in eighth grade right now. They haven't been given any advanced information, I mean, they were told you're getting credit for algebra one. And if you've done your language and you did well, you can start in level two in French or Spanish. And attention on their skills and like where they're at with it, but that's what the messaging is about.
So again, that, that was part of the memo, and this is a clarification that. We need to make sure folks understand they will get high school credit, not credit for that course. So we had talked at the policy committee about it becoming possibly an elective. There will be a course credit granted at the high school level. But again, because we're not having apples to apples courses. We can't say that, okay, you've completed algebra one, or you've completed X amount of years of French or Spanish. But there is a credit that is given to them at the high school level.
So I guess. That doesn't entirely make sense to me. I mean, I would not want to ever put a student in a position where they didn't have the foundation if they need to go to the next level. We don't serve kids when we do that. But I don't know what an elective algebra one credit means if you still have to take algebra one. Or an elective Spanish credit means if you're still taking Spanish one, what is that credit for?
So the credit would go toward graduation. The, but again, again, so going back to the conversation we had at policy committee a little earlier today. The calibration has to happen, so again, this is why it's in the strategic plan and we're working on this. So that this doesn't continue to happen where we have students who are not ready when they get to the high school for certain days. So we're, we're working on all that calibration.
In the, so, okay, but it's not really Spanish credit if you're still starting from the beginning of Spanish.
I guess when, like.
What is it? I'm sorry, I don't mean to be like nitpicky because I think it does.
Just go.
It's not a line.
But just fire.
It definitely gonna ask that.
But my my opinion is go after.
I guess my.
Oh, good point.
So if you can't demonstrate your, sorry, Byron, you go ahead. I guess um, I know where you're coming from. I guess what I'm confused about is like. If they aren't leveled in such a way to go to algebra two, for example.
Then they shouldn't go to algebra two, like I.
And so that they have, and then they go to algebra one, right? And then they take that class and they get an algebra, then they have two algebra one credits.
Well, that's what I'm not understanding.
So I guess I guess the point is like if. If we give them an elective credit, that's one pathway. If we don't do that, let's say we don't do that, we do something different because we can't have them go to algebra two, right? So then they take algebra one. And so then they end up with two algebra one credits, or what's what happens?
But that's what I'm saying, I don't understand, like it, what it is just gonna say elective random class, like.
Like a big credit.
That is not how the transcripts usually are worded.
I think this is very much a unique thing, or it sounds exactly what we do, so like the there is a, I mean, there's just credits at the bottom that are earned in another place.
My my understanding is that this pathway is through VLS to that.
Yeah, those transfer.
And yeah, they do, like I I've taken VLS courses at the high school, it would count as. A regular credit, you wouldn't have to take algebra one, you would just move right into geometry.
Right, I mean, I could have just taken VLS classes. But they count for a specific subject that they took, so that's where I'm not understanding what the elective credit is.
Are you saying this counts as an elective credit? As what is.
That's what I'm asking.
I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm what I'm trying to get is that what's the other option? Like, I don't I don't see another pathway, if it's not elective credit. Right, and they can't go to algebra two, like what goes in that logical slot there, other than elective credit?
Mm-hmm.
Not enough, but it just seems confusing.
Well, so I mean, I think I think back to when Byron started, what we were talking about was about maps.
Yeah.
And like the phosphor.
Yeah.
It was about designing, if you designed a map from scratch.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have this kind of, which was awesome.
Yeah.
Right? And I think this is the same thing here, if you designed this solution from scratch, this wouldn't be the solution you can create. Um, so what you have is this attempt to fix the thing, which is a problem, which was. For a variety of reasons, kids were given non-high school level work at the middle school. But were told that that would give them high school credit. Then they got the credit and then they're incapable of doing, they didn't get what they needed in order to do it, so so it's, so then, so I think it's it's that. Trying to um, create an imperfect solution to, you know, a problem that's a lousy problem that's in the design and system.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just don't know, I don't know what's the suggestion other than like this, I mean, like I'm totally open, I mean, yeah, I mean, I just don't know what the other option is, it's it's. I guess it's been my point.
Although we, well, we, well, we had that, I mean, it was a miserable failure.
That's basically what happened.
It was a miserable failure and when we talked. And when we talked about it, that policy, I think I brought up the example of if you were going to college in one place, you transferred to a different college and you might have taken a course. But because the course at the new college maybe is was missed, it added additional unit that the first college didn't teach. You, that class would still count toward your credits for graduation, but would not fulfill the need for that course. So you would have to retake if it was chemistry or whatever it was, so this is essentially the same thing that's happening. But to Zach's point, it's it's again, it's a bridge year that we're doing this for to get through this sort of.
And.
Apples to oranges.
And I'll say anecdotally, just from again. Whatever the history is, um, the way in which the history is portrayed from the inside is that originally the birth of this was you had like two kids. Who were way ahead of their classmates, and they would be transported over to high school. And they would actually take high school doctrine. Uh, I mean, they sang or they saw, and in case of these couple of kids, they. Um, and then there was a desire, more families were like, why would my kid show, but I know my kid have to go over to high school. Um, so then. Effectively, the program then changed uh, in order to incorporate more kids via choice into the program. I would think behind the scenes, some of the years, some of those students, the uh, had more students in the program, less of them were as well prepared as the one or two students who were recently in the program. Uh, and then over time, in order to have the course progress in a way that carried most students along. The content was not the same rigor as high school. So people felt excited and good, my kids taking the most rigorous stuff, um, but that most rigorous stuff was one down to incorporate more kids. Then when those kids actually had to do the actual work at high school level, they were not prepared to do that.
Right.
So now we're at the point where, okay, that happened, uh, and now it's how do we fix it? Realign everything, um, and move forward in a way, and just whatever, if you're gonna get high school credit, you can actually do high school work. Uh, but we ended up with this imperfect crossover fix.
Right.
That we're trying to do right now.
So I guess my question is, what is the timing to communicate this to families who have eighth graders right now in the spaces who. May be aware of none of this? You know, because I totally can understand the idea of you're not ready to do algebra two, you should not be in algebra two, like no. Dispute of that, but just to be able to say, well, if your student is gonna need to be able to put these skills or pass this specific exam. Or they will instead get elective credit, I'd be telling people that now, instead of telling them surprise at the end of the year would be a better transition for kids too. Because they're also gonna have new schedules in March, and they're gonna have to register for their classes, and if they're not prepared.
Then they're gonna have, then your entire schedule will be.
And it's my understanding that those conversations, if they haven't already happened, will be happening within the next month.
I mean, there's, and and anyone who had kids who were in last year's uh, freshman group.
Yeah.
They all heard the stories.
Right.
That every parent, almost every parent sent, ended up coming in and talking intensely with the high school staff about what's the best student who wasn't very relevant to. Um, so I think within those circles, I think that there are not everybody, but I I think that's in the water already, but I think we have to effectively go into job formally follow up with folks to make sure.
We did, we did talk a little about that policy too, that um, how and when people would be informed of this. And I, but I think going back to um, one of Lisa's earlier points is. That was, I think what she said was that this policy will go into effect immediately and makes me wonder then should, I think that memo was so helpful in. Describing what will happen for each class year, and I just wonder if there's a way to. I I guess it doesn't belong in the policy, but it feels strange to use this policy that won't apply to certain kids, but it will apply to the next group of kids. Because there's a, there's a difference in how we're gonna treat kids this year versus next year.
So I think we can share elements, I think the middle school could communicate elements of what. Principal Kenosie put in his memo to the policy committee with some, we could tweak that, but I think the core of it is inside of that memo.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Um, and I think we just, yeah, I think we could just repurpose it for a obvious.
But are we okay with having a policy that doesn't include that? That, so.
I think we're telling it right now, we're gonna send it to people, so.
Yeah, okay.
So I think.
I'm not doubting that, I'm just.
Okay, so.
I just want to make sure that the policy will still apply appropriately to everyone. And that we're not gonna be working against it and so.
Gotcha.
Um, and then the other thing that we didn't mention was that while all of this is happening around math. The world language discussion, it's has yet to have be hap, has yet to happen, so we're about to eventually go through and do the whole same thing with world language, so. Right now. World language is, I believe, sort of following the same path that math used to follow. And and will until it's addressed.
They're, again, they're working on it, and this is, I'll keep pointing back to the strategic plan because we spent so much time getting it to a place where we were satisfied with it, but that focus area one. I think it's focus area one because it is so huge and it it doesn't encompass all of this. And it's going to take time to sort of roll all of this out and figure it all out, but it's also happening at the same time. So.
Okay, oh, so are there any other comments or feedback on this policy? Alright, and I will entertain a motion to approve it. Uh.
And we already have.
We have motion, we just need to vote.
We have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa was was first and Byron was second, I'm sorry, I will take uh, all the vote to approve IMBC, all of them here.
Fine. I'm.
Any opposed? Alright, that's the same. Okay, can you go on to one now?
Oh, we do want.
We have new.
Oh, well, we have, I I thought there was something in between, we have one more. Um, that is now a new one that's coming first. Why is this one single?
Because it's a single because this was.
It's already.
Previously back.
Previously from, yeah, it just feels like it's been around forever.
Motion to approve D C N?
Thank you.
Um, okay, so this one, yeah, that's right, we did approve it before, um, but then it was part of fall update um, from NHSBA again, and. We were a little ahead of the times because we had already changed the gen, changed gender uh, language and stuff, um, but they had, they moved to the term. Um, lactation needs over um, nursing persons, which was previously nursing mothers, so um, that is what you will see a million times over in here. All that, thank goodness went through and updated all of that language to um, to use the updated terminology. Are there questions about what's happening?
I would say one thing is not directly related to change, but I think it's important. When um, when we originally contemplated the last change, and we were substantively talking about engaging staff, we missed the feedback from staff about what this looked like for people. Um, the place where we had some, I think we were concerned in like, we want to have the standards by which we would allow people um, parking space. Uh, that is like if a pleasant space, New Franklin School. That ties right back to the district conversation about space. Uh, and that is a, that is a living thing, but it's currently not hypothetically, it's happening now. That we don't have the types of space we want to fulfill the spirit of what is inside of this policy. Um, in New Franklin School, because we don't have enough, we don't, we haven't distributed space uh, equitably enough to allow that to happen well. So there are, this is not, I think sometimes we'll talk, or we're just talking about hypotheticals down the road, and is this worth it? No, we are talking about that, we're also talking about things that are happening right now that are impactful inside our schools as a result of poor distribution of space.
Anybody else? Alright, we'll vote to approve A C N, all of us in favor. Any opposed? Alright. That one passes too, thank you.
Thank you, Pip. Pip, Byron, thank you for your hard work on the committee, Paulette and Patty. Thank you, it's a lot of work. Um, okay, we'll move on, consideration and approval of DOE twenty five and MS twenty five.
As we did, we already have an exciting financial report tonight, there are many much longer ones, um, these are the ones that we send into the state. Um, they're detailed accounting reports as far as how uh, FY twenty fourth, what it came. What it was to be at, as of these days, so. Uh, DOE twenty five is what we send to Department of Education so they can, for data purposes and for their analyzation. The P, the MS twenty five, it goes to Department of Revenue, uh, so they can set taxes. And the numbers are not in the same place. So, I do, we will all, both the signatures, whatever.
Do we have a motion to approve DOE twenty five and MS twenty five?
So.
Then. Byron, Brian, and Byron, any discussion?
Lawyer.
What did you say? It's a law firm.
That's side of the room tonight, that's side of the room tonight.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I will send these around, the only thing I ask is the board chair assigned for super, I'm both of these, in super kind of science, under each of them, it's for members, that's.
Okay.
And these are.
They come with a.
So look here.
I mentioned, I think.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Truly, in that, like, then, like, in the power side, you know.
One, two, tuition rate memo, confirmation and approval.
You'll see, also on back in here, um, because the DOE twenty five is completely, you can actually now do our. Uh, tuition rates, we have non-area tuition rates, S A U fifty area tuition rates, which are different. Um, the non-area tuition rates are subject to final approval by the DOE, um, sorry, by the Department of Education, when they send their official um. Cost per student out, rates out, but these numbers are read out of the.
We have a motion to approve the tuition rate memo. The. Byron, Brian, discussion?
I have a second question on the. Like S A U fifty, do.
Any special, so, does this cover, so like, what if there's some out of district, S A U out of district placement for an S A U fifty?
This is a conversation today, if we get this our student as if they. Uh, come here for high school, and when they get sent out, they're our student. An S A U fifty student, before they come here, are an S A U fifty student. Say, uh, for example, a Greenwood student in fourth grade. Gets sent out of out of districts, that actually is, our S. For high school, though.
Wow, weird.
No, because they own student, they're playing in student state.
Does it, does the ownership change when they go from sixth grade or from middle school to high school?
If they become our student, although they're assigned to S A U fifty, because they get the adequate seed funding for that student. They're part of the, they're part of the decision to go out of district, but. A lot of that will. But the, but. The, that tuition rate does figure in, especially the cost that we have uh, for students.
Oh, Brian, why is the um, tuition rate at middle school and the high school, but S A U fifty less than our, which is.
It's it's a separate formula, uh, that's, it's uh, long form myself, and even based on where you're, although I do go over it, thanks, when we figured it out, it's a. Very complicated, long spreadsheet that uh, is used to figure out what that is, and it's been used here as well.
And do we still have one of the highest per pupil costs in the state?
Honestly, no, no.
Oh.
I know, close.
No, no.
Most of them are well over twenty five.
I think, I think we viewed, I think, I think, I feel like sometime in the last two years, we looked at. Those costs. And we were not, top twenty five percent.
Yeah.
I think.
Close, probably close, yeah, yeah.
Um, yeah.
Okay. Uh, oh, okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed, motion passes? Okay, um, now we have committee updates, Byron, can we start with you?
Sure.
No. We'll be, we'll be here for a while long.
This is for the NHPC, NHSBA uh, meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, um. So I went to the, I think what you call the daily assembly, I believe, this uh, the usual, I encountered on Saturday morning, um.
Thank you.
You're welcome, um. So. As far as the first block in this, I'm sure they'll put out, I'll do my best to recount. Uh, the first block, one, two, twelve, um, they all passed. Um, one, one, uh, one, three, and five through twelve. Passed in a block, and then two and four rolled out. Um, because there was some, it was, it was not unanimous, but they passed. And then in the blocks thirteen through twenty four, um. Don't recall specifically what the final, or it wasn't every one of them, I'm sure it's in the minutes, I think the one thing I wanted to call out was. In twenty two, which was the youth risk and heater survey. Um, we, the NHPC, NHSBA recommendation was to not support the resolution. Uh, our uh, position was supported. There was a um, amendment, amended language that was suggested. Um, and I voted in support of the resolution with the amended language for twenty two. Um, that was the only thing that was like a slight wrinkle from sort of the degree of month spreadsheet that was here. Um, so I think that's for covering. Um, so I think that sort of covers, uh, you know, as far as the, the, but I think there's, those minutes will capture, uh, from that meeting, which are all the votes there, but, um, yeah, that was, that was sort of my take on.
Did that end up passing, or they?
Yes, it ended, almost unanimously, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah. Um, and I think that was, I wish I had better notes on, um, the specific reason why the NH school association, um, I think it had to do with um, specifying funding sources for the surveys, was like the specific uh, rationale as to why the school association wasn't in support of it. Uh, but the school districts at large there seemed to be very much in support of it. Um, yeah.
Was it well attended? How many?
There was fifty one delegates, fifty one.
How many? Wow.
Um, I think they needed around twenty five percent or something to have the meeting, and we were, I don't remember the, what we were, they were below fifty percent, but certainly more than what needed more. Um, yeah, it was, uh, not to call out Raymond specifically, but one interesting anecdote was, um, there was a resolution to, uh, amend language, uh, so that they wouldn't have to have public comment voting for thirty minutes at the beginning of the other three meetings, even if no one showed up. Because there was a strict interpretation of, uh, policy by legal counsel that, and so they, in their meetings, beginning of the meeting, they open the clock at thirty minutes. And even if no one shows up, thirty minutes passes. They have a meeting, and same on the tail end of it. Um, so.
That's ridiculous.
Yeah, the, the, um, yeah, the response from the school board, um, committee was don't do that.
Yeah.
It was, uh, interesting takeaways, but all of those very form and very, uh, parliamentary in, in its procedure. That one.
Thanks for having me.
Yes, thank you for going.
Your turn.
And
Oh, Ben.
You know, as a school board, if we, we should think now, it's a year away, if we haven't had resolutions that we, we might want to present our votes for the school board, so keep that in the back of your mind, if you can think of anything that is telling and and that.
A bit, a bit, a bit, a bit, a matter of honor.
Yeah, totally. Do not, honestly. Maybe we have some refreshments of, we'll need thirty minutes.
Right.
Okay, and our policy committee, the minutes are here. Pip, do you have any comment on?
Uh, no. I don't think so. Sure. Except I would encourage you to look at that memo that we discussed.
Okay.
One, then?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, future agenda request items? We can send that Google page, but does anybody have anything like to say?
Yeah, I think we should, um, I think we did have it on the agenda tonight around each district name, it's probably required to get it on there now.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we should get it on there. Um, and we can, uh, yeah, we can fill in in terms of any supporting materials following the meeting on Monday. Um, or I'm not supposed to work here.
Right, and if anyone has suggestions for the committee, um, email Byron and Carrie, um.
So. Um, just as a note to us, a, we did modify the presentation between work presentation and the forum. That was in response, or attempting to be responsive to the feedback from the community, like have an option that doesn't include whatever the.
Those, yeah.
Hillside and mockay ads. Um, and so we just need, we'll make sure to post that if I can.
Oh, and the other, the other thing I'll, I'll say about the difference between the presentations is the presentation we had for the board, the data in that presentation was from August, and the presentation for the community was data that came in October. And the reason that we didn't have the, although we technically did have the data by board meeting, we had it within not enough time to update material packet in terms of what was there. So we updated that in time for meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Um, okay, our next, oh, we have to reopen the public comments.
I just have one question. I know that you have the Google form where you're tracking agenda items, but at some point, are we gonna be able to determine when things are going to be put on the meeting agendas?
Uh, we'll look at that in our next agenda planning meeting.
Okay, it would just be nice to know when things are going to be put on the agenda and when they're not, and then like, okay.
And then we'll put them on it.
Okay, thank you.
Answer might be, we don't know when.
There.
Right. When we can send it to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anything else? Don't forget the parade is September sixth, I mean, September fifteenth, it's that Saturday. We invite.
So it would be like, this, this upcoming, that's Monday, and my updated staff will be in that next Monday, not over staff. So, for this Monday, it's.
And my husband has offered to drive, um, he's got a convertible. He was in a, um, you know. Um, so I said we can, we can do that if people don't wanna walk away. We can decorate it somehow. I know you can get like, um, magnets that light up that could go on there and stuff. I, I would, I would recommend Nancy be in the car because otherwise she's sitting on the bed and she stops and stops.
Yeah, yeah, and you know.
She has to hug all her.
She's got a convertible rope line, like, president, and he, um, he got to keep her.
No. I'll give that to you. Language.
I have a.
And we can hand out candy to our, of that's.
Is that?
Can throw it.
Can throw, yes.
Hand it, oh. If we wanted to do something, I think that would be good. And I think some sort of theme would be great. Just saying.
Okay, everybody think about that.
Everyone thinks about that. Yeah.
Sounds like you were traveling.
No, not really, but. Okay, I, so the parade is on September seventh, though it's a Saturday. Our next meeting is November twelfth. And we will be in City Hall chambers, yes, City Hall chamber, okay? We have to reopen the public comment. We will close the public comment.
Maybe.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone. The wind is beautiful out. Yeah, I do like.
There we have those.
Go there. Thank you, she's gonna go work every day.
Are we not yet to, so maybe we wait to.
So that's whales.
Yeah.